Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Atomo City Council meeting. Before we proceed with our city council meeting tonight, we are going to have a brief Board of Health meeting, so I'm going to call the Board of Health meeting to order, and Chris is going to take the role call.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Councilmember Basu?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
Approve the minutes for meeting number three on August 6, 2024 as presented. Recommendation: Approve the Minutes.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Here. Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set to consider condemnation of the structures on the property located at 1309 Castle in the city of Atomo, Wapalo County, Iowa.
I'll go ahead and open the condemnation hearing, and I believe Zach, you're going to carry this?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. The structure at 1309 Castle was placarded June 1, 2023. It was placarded due to structural issues inside the building, no utilities, and an issue with the sanitary sewer. Since it was placarded, the house has been added to the recurring mowing list and had to be mowed by the city contractor. There's been no attempt to repair the property or no current repair plan or permission. We did serve condemnation notice by certified mail and by posting on the property for all four of the ones tonight. Our office did send the notice to the Legals Department at the Courier, but they've had some staff changes there. There wasn't a publication in the paper, but we did verify with Legal that the only reason we serve in the paper is to cover known and unknown errors, things like that, and there was nobody with property interest in this case that needed to be served by the paper. So all four of these tonight, we had adequate notice.
Does the council have any questions for Zach regarding this particular property? If not, since this is a condemnation hearing, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak about this particular property? Okay, if not, I'd entertain a motion to close the condemnation hearing.
Move.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Condemn the structures located at 1309 Castle, order prompt demolition, removal, and leveling of the lot, and direct all costs attended to such actions, including administrative costs, to be assessed against the property and/or collected from the owner or owners thereof. Recommendation: Approve the condemnation of the structures located at 1309 Castle.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set to consider condemnation of the structures on the property located at 103 South Adams in the city of Atomo, Wapalo County, Iowa.
I'll go ahead and open the condemnation hearing, and Zach, I believe you're going to cover this one as well.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The structure at 103 South Adams is placarded March 28 of 2023. It was also placarded for structural issues and lack of utilities. At that time, it was vacant, and that's been the case the entire time we've had the file open. We've had to add it to the recurring mowing list and have it mowed by the city's contractor. There's been no progress toward repair or repair plan or permission for the property.
Does council have any questions for Zach regarding this particular property? If not, does anyone in the audience have any comments or questions regarding this particular property? If not, I'd go ahead and entertain a motion to close the condemnation hearing.
Move.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Condemn the structures located at 103 South Adams, order prompt demolition, removal, and leveling of the lot, and direct all costs attended to such actions, including administrative costs, to be assessed against the property and/or collected from the owner or owners thereof. Recommendation: Approve the condemnation of the structures located at 103 South Adams Street.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Chris, take the role.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set to consider condemnation of the structures on the property located at 225 Paris Street in the city of Atomo, Wapalo County, Iowa.
I'll open the condemnation hearing, and Zach, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. This structure was placarded February 27 of this year due to structural conditions, and in this case, it was left open to the elements. We'd received complaints of squatters from the neighbors. The only communication we've had with the property owners was indicating that they intend to walk away from the property and had no interest in making repairs. Since it was placarded, we've had to mow this property as well. We don't have a repair plan, and there hasn't been progress toward repair or permission for the property.
Does council have any questions for Zach regarding this particular property? Does anyone in the audience have any comments that they'd like to make regarding this particular property? Okay, if not, I'd entertain a motion to close the condemnation hearing.
Move.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Condemn the structures located at 225 Paris Street, order prompt demolition, removal, and leveling of the lot, and direct all costs attended to such actions, including administrative costs, to be assessed against the property and/or collected from the owner or owners thereof. Recommendation: Approve the condemnation of the structures located at 225 Paris Street.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
This is the time, place, and date set to consider condemnation of the structures on the property located at 714 North Cooper in the city of Atomo, Wapalo County, Iowa.
I'll go ahead and open the condemnation hearing, and Zach, I believe you're going to cover this one also.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This one's a little bit different because there has been a timely appeal filed. So I'll kind of go through the facts as our department views them and our recommendation, and then I think there is a representative for the appellant that wants to speak as well. The structure at 714 North Cooper was placarded June 7, 2023. It was placarded for structural issues, lack of utilities, interior damage, including water damage from a distressed roof, multiple issues with electrical and plumbing, and it's been left open to the elements. For those 14 months, it's consistently been left open to the elements, including today before this hearing where the back door is still open, windows are still open at the property. The owner, Mr. Negretti, resides in California. He hasn't had any personal appearance with our department at all. He's sometimes had contractors that he hoped to have let into the building. At least one of those contractors instead squatted in the building and caused significant damage. There's been other squatters in the property as well for the duration of those 14 months, and we receive consistent calls from neighbors that are concerned about squatters, vandals, thieves, and pests being harbored inside the buildings. It's been continually left open. The property's had to be mowed by the city, and we've had to complete nuisance abatement cleanups totaling $1,913 so far on the property as well. We don't have a current repair plan or permission. Permission expired August 2023. There is an interested buyer looking to purchase the house. I believe the Realtor for that transaction is here, and they indicated the buyer might be here as well. As I understand it, their plan is to purchase the property for $14,000. No one has had permission to enter the property from the department, so they have not prepared any kind of detailed repair plan, but they did list items that were on the deficiency list that they said they've intended to repair. You know, it's our opinion that, you know, Mr. Negretti purchased this property. He has not made any sufficient effort to make repairs. It's been a significant nuisance and, you know, a serious concern for 14 months to his neighbors. We don't have any knowledge of the... We know the buyer's name, but they're not someone who's known to the department. We don't know their ability to complete rehabilitation for a severely distressed property such as this one. It's our recommendation that we, you know, stop the process here and proceed with the condemnation. If the council is inclined to look into any kind of alternative or is willing to look at what Mr. Lunsford or anyone else is going to propose tonight, it would be our department's position that any rehabilitation would have to be completed swiftly, we believe 90 days, and we would also hope that the council would insist that payment from Mr. Negretti for the $1,913 that he owes now is made prior to any closing, being able to proceed. Thank you.
Does council have any questions for Zach regarding this particular property? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak regarding this particular property? If so, would you come up to the podium and identify yourself and give your address and name, please?
My name is Lonnie Lunsford. I'm a Realtor with Team Real Estate. I represent the seller, Ryan Negretti. There's been an update since we've spoken or emailed. The buyer for this contract has decided not to buy the property, so he has a little bit of reservations about cost and perhaps risk. So there is no buyer at this time, and I understand the seller hasn't been to the city. I haven't met him. I listed his property a couple of months ago and kind of learned about the details as we've been going. So he wanted me to come here and appeal, but quite honestly, I don't believe he has a good plan to... His plan was to sell the property to this gentleman. There's no longer a deal for buying the property, so at this point in time, I don't believe he has an adequate plan to fix the property.
I guess the question I have, do you know this individual very well or have known them very long?
No, I don't know this individual. He called our company some time ago and asked us to list his property.
Okay.
So we did that, and so we weren't aware at the time that it was on the... There were demolition plans of the property. We knew it was tagged by the city.
Yeah. And they were given a deficiency list back in February of 2023, so they've had ample time to try and come forward and try and make some kind of a plan with the city, and they've not done that, so.
I understand.
Appreciate you for being here.
Yeah, and I told him I'd show up and just at least update everybody, so.
Does council have any questions for Mr. Lunsford?
Are you continuing to try to sell this property?
Well, with the recent developments and in light of the canceled offer, I would await the decision of the city to say the house will be destroyed, and then, of course, we would take the house off the market at that point in time. So technically, it is still on the market at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak regarding this particular property? Okay, if not, I would entertain a motion to close the condemnation hearing.
Move.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just, given that there was an appeal and the property owner, the interested party is not present, I do want to make sure that the council is aware of the letter in the packet and has reviewed it itself.
Yeah, it was made part of the packet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Chris will take the role.
I need a second.
Oh, I thought you had it, I'm sorry.
Second.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Condemn the structures located at 714 North Cooper, order prompt demolition, removal, and leveling of the lot, and direct all costs attended to such actions, including administrative costs, to be assessed against the property and/or collected from the owner or owners thereof. Recommendation: Approve the condemnation of the structures located at 714 North Cooper.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Your Honor, I don't know if it's appropriate that we should make an offer to allow the owner to pay the $1,900 plus that he owes us and withhold the condemnation, but if that's a possibility and they are going to step forward with the money, I think we could consider that, even though we approved it for condemnation.
I believe the vote the council just took was to do the condemnation.
Yes.
So that would typically be final. We'd have to undo that motion if we were to be willing to accept anything else.
Well, if he comes back and appeals that he would pay that amount, we can undo the condemnation if he does that on a timely basis.
I guess, I don't know how we'd want to proceed with that because what the vote was just now would be the final decision of the council. I can bring further information to the council in the future, but what we would typically do right now is Jake would start tomorrow with ordering the asbestos testing and the water disconnect and the utility disconnect, and then we'd proceed with trying to demolish it as quickly as we can.
I think it'd be better if we just cut our losses and go ahead with the decision. Yeah, just...
And the asbestos and the actual taking down of the property will be assessed against the property owner anyhow along with those other fees, correct?
They will, and, you know, typically those aren't recovered, and we typically get the property on tax sale instead, but...
But there would be an opportunity, I guess, for him to still pay it.
Right.
All right, in the future, Your Honor, if there is a possibility before we approve condemnation, I would like to have the opportunity to speak for or against that. I probably should have before we did the condemnation, but I didn't, so we're good to go.
Okay, thank you. If that's all the business that we have for the Board of Health meeting, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the Board of Health meeting.
Move.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Okay, we will now proceed with the Atomo City Council meeting. I will call that meeting to order, and if everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Here.
Councilmember Galloway?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here. The next item is our consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Move.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
The next item on our agenda is to approve tonight's agenda for the city council meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
The next item is our city administrator's report to the council and the citizens of Atomo. I'll turn it over to Phil Rath, our city administrator.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. I guess I wanted to start tonight with a quick update on the comprehensive plan. It's estimated that we've achieved about 20% progress of the overall Aratoma 2040 comprehensive plan with a projected 5.5% of those items being complete. Closer look at the first goal that was identified, which is housing, illustrates an overall progress of about 46% and about 15% of the objectives in that category completed. So as many of you probably remember, housing has repeatedly been a... It was brought up during that time and continues to be a major opportunity and challenge for the community. Housing improvement refers to both the need for new housing units and the need to improve the housing already existing within the community, and I think we saw a little bit of that with just the Department of Health and talking about the potential demolishing of units that are beyond repair and in disrepair. We do have an older housing stock, some of which is historic and has plenty of charm and quaintness and offers unique opportunities for residents. However, the overall age of the housing stock that contributes to its charm can also have instances where homes are requiring extensive rehabilitation, maintenance, and the comprehensive plan was trying to identify strategies to help improve the existing housing stock and also providing an affordable housing stock option for local residents. One of the other facets of that was to attract new housing development within the community and also provide opportunities for rehabilitation and remodeling of current housing stock where that is feasible. Some of the highlights over... Since the plan has been in place over the last few years, the city has implemented new zoning code regulations, created a historic tax abatement plan, initiated neighborhood cleanup collaborations, neighborhood meetings, and had launched the Blocks Neighborhoods program. They've also... We've also initiated a home purchase program through JBS, completed the 2022 Atomo Housing Plan, and supported the Atomo Housing Authority, established Mission 500, which is a partnership committed to new housing construction, and we have supported the applications for a couple of other tax credit programs, which unfortunately, at the moment, have not gotten through the approval process, but I think it's one of those opportunities that we still have on the horizon. Going forward, we'll continue to support Mission 500, looking... Supporting Legacy Foundation and others. One of the things that was an opportunity there was the West Second Street project, helping homeowners in that area with cleaning up yards and helping to enhance that as an entrance back into the city. So those are just some of the things within housing that we've been working on and continue to work towards. Infill development is definitely one of those priorities that we continue to work with. Let's see. Couple other things I just wanted to highlight real quick. I'd like to congratulate and apologize if I'm stealing your thunder, but the library recertification process that went through...
You just stole it.
All right, well, I'll let you highlight more on that, but...
Go ahead, it's exciting, go ahead.
Just to call out that recently, the library was recertified, and that is a three-year process or for a three-year timeline there, and exciting the work that goes into that, and appreciation to Sonia and her staff and all the volunteers that work with the library in keeping that certified is a great accomplishment.
They have a good board as well.
Yeah, yep. And then finally, I just wanted to remind everyone, if you are interested and available this Thursday at 6:30 at the Atomo Career Campus, which is located at 331 East Main Street, there will be a forum to talk about the local option sales and service tax for the city and the county. We have a vote on that coming up on September 10, and so anyone that would like to get more information on that, I know our Finance Director, Cole O'Donnell, will be presenting information on behalf of the city. We're also, I think we have out there frequently asked questions and getting more information out on our website and Facebook, social media, but that would be a great opportunity to be able to ask questions about it, what it means, and I believe then probably the next meeting will also have a presentation for council, and that will go out on the meeting site then as well.
At that same meeting, they're also going to allow the two people running for city council to have an opportunity to have people ask them questions.
Great.
Dan Reed and Siam Basu.
All right, so that is this Thursday, August 22, 6:30 PM at Career Campus, 331 East Main Street, and I encourage you, if you have questions, to attend. Go ahead.
I do appreciate, Phil, that you brought up some updates on the city's comprehensive plan for 2040 because I think a lot of people sometimes feel like when those kind of plans are written and just put on a shelf, and everybody forgets about it till the next one's due. And I think the city's demonstrated their due diligence in trying to constantly continually work towards getting all those things accomplished, as you cited tonight, so I think it's important that periodically we do give updates to the community and the public so that they know that we are keeping track of things and we're trying to make that goal of reaching all those benchmarks by the time the comprehensive plan is done, so thank you for giving us that update. Does council have any questions for City Administrator Rath?
What was the time of that meeting on the 22nd?
6:30 PM.
Thank you.
And it's at the Career Academy downtown.
Got it.
Okay. The next item is to ask if there's anyone that would like to speak on any of tonight's agenda items, and we do have several people that would like to speak on different items on our agenda, so instead of doing all that now, I'll just have you individually come up when we get to that agenda item on our agenda, and appreciate people for wanting to give us their input on these issues. Okay, we have one public hearing. Then we'll get started with that.
And this is a reconvened public hearing, so it's the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on proposed ordinance number 3231 2024, amending the Fire Protection and Prevention Code of the city of Atomo by adopting an amendment providing for standardization of performance compliance alternatives to automatic fire sprinkler systems in certain group R occupancies.
So I'm going to reconvene the public hearing that got tabled last council meeting, so Zach, is there anything further you'd like to say?
No, I think that we've had, you know, quite a few meetings on the topic. I think we've had one-on-one conversations with all the council members. Just, you know, in my position as the building official, as the planning and zoning, economic development, you know, the department head, I do think that this amendment is really trying to strike a middle ground between where we were prior to the new fire code and then, you know, having the concerns from the business community raised that the new fire code went too far. I think that we did a pretty good job of pulling back to where we're making progress toward getting buildings into a better condition without putting us in a situation where we can't get the, you know, the critical work of downtown redevelopment done. So I think it'd be good to just get the public feedback from the reconvened public hearing and then, you know, be here to answer questions.
Does council have any questions that they'd like to ask Zach?
I do, Mayor. Just a quick question.
Yeah.
So just to confirm, if this amendment is passed today, whether it's passed or not, so this is like the beginning of the conversation, right? We're still working toward developing programs on how to be able to get sprinklers into the buildings downtown, you know, in best practice, correct?
Right, and that's one of the things that is pretty significant of a change here is among the performance compliance things that we described, one of them is that, you know, a property owner that would otherwise require a sprinkler system is to take advantage of an exception. They would sign an agreement to participate voluntarily in a shared system if we are to do something like we saw in the presentation from West Des Moines where there is something that's made available.
Thank you.
And this is just the first consideration, too.
Yep.
So this is just the first consideration, however, in that this first... Is there a timeline of when sprinklers would have to be put in or would have to be implemented, or is this a... You know, like you and I talked about, is there really not a date?
Yeah, so there isn't a sunset or anything to the exception in the ordinance, so we're going to continue to try to look at those projects like they did in West Des Moines with the shared sprinkler. We're going to try to pursue some grant opportunities. I think the Main Street Challenge Grant is an opportunity where that'll fit. If we do, you know, get into the Iowa Great Places Program, which we've tried a couple of times, that could be a source of funding there as well. So we're going to continue to chase those, and then we're going to have to regularly update fire codes, and I think every time we have that conversation, this is a good reminder that this is a pretty sensitive issue. We want to make sure we decide with intent where we're going to land on that issue every time we revisit fire and building codes.
Right, and, you know, I want to be transparent to my colleagues, I, I still don't support that, because there is no definite... And you and I have talked, I'm not saying anything that's offensive to anybody. I don't think that ones who want the amendment are the enemy. I, I don't think that, you know, they don't care about safety. I just want to be transparent. And just, if I could take 30 seconds, just to share a couple of things, I want to be transparent to the public and tell them why I've landed on that decision. Yeah, when you read about sprinklers, it's, it's the lives, it's the lives that, you know, that they do save, and it's the firefighter lives, and there's different things we don't think about. We realize when sprinklers go off, 97% of the time, that controls a fire from life damage and property damage. When it's not going to control, it at least gives time. We have a vulnerable population, some of them who, who live in buildings like that, which will be our senior citizens, children, and some people with disabilities. Even, even if there were other routes out, that sprinkler gives them enough time, gives them time to save lives and get out. We don't think of long-term things either, such as cancer and firefighters, which is the number one killer. Sprinklers reduce toxins and carcinogens in the air by 90% when they have to go in. It also allows them to do their rescues or their overhaul much faster, much quicker. There were some studies done. It reduces firefighter injuries by 68%. In a sprinkler, one sprinkler head is about 10 to 26 gallons per minute. And just for that myth, not all sprinkler heads go off. And I know a lot of you know that, I just have to reiterate that every time. One sprinkler head goes off, it's, it's heat, not smoke. Occupancy, we, we talked about occupancy, and there were some great ideas with occupancy. I'm not putting down what anybody said. Occupancy, however, identifies a fire. We can identify a fire, but with a way out, when I talked to, I, I made some calls and did some research. One insurance agent made a comment to me that really stuck with me. He said, "One sprinkler is like having a fireman on duty in your place 24 hours a day." So you get that 24-hour protection. Because there was some rumor that the insurance companies wouldn't insure. If you have a sprinkler system, they won't insure because of the damage they can do. When, in all actuality, it was the insurance companies that turned me on to it. It reduces damage by 70%. So just for one example, and I promise I'll shut up, because I know everybody wants to move on. Just for one example, I looked at apartment buildings, restaurants, and different kinds of businesses we'd have downtown. In an apartment building, one sprinkler head, and these are studies, these are facts that can be looked up, can reduce damage from $45,000 down to $2,200, because it's held to room and content. In, in, excuse me, that was apartments. In restaurants, it can reduce the, the damage from $53,000 to $100,000 down to $13,000 and under. Again, I say, I know they care about safety, but, but that's, that's the side I'm going on. It saves so many lives. It reduces firefighter injuries by 68%. It reduces firefighter fatalities by 95%. And then, you know, when it was, you know, when I was researching this again, and things came to my mind that I hadn't thought about, like, like senior citizens, disabled people, and children, the time to get out. Also, there was, I'll, I'll stop with this, there was some concern about abandoned buildings. Abandoned buildings, now, we do have some abandoned buildings downtown. They're actually still kept in pretty good shape. And there was some talk that abandoned buildings kill firemen. That's true, I don't want to dispute that fact, however, it's also environmental. If you go to Chicago, Detroit, big places like that, they have a different, the abandonment problem is, is different. They may not even know the buildings are abandoned. Here, we still have, actually, Zach, we have Zach who's on top of it, and his team are who on top of those abandoned buildings, the fire departments on top of it. Even members of the police department who have to go, go look are aware of it. So that's environmental, so I just wanted to address those facts. And this was not to put anybody on the other side down. This was just for me to be transparent why I came to my decision, so. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Bill. Does council have any other questions?
Yeah, Zach, can you tell me what Group R occupancies is?
Yeah, so those are residential occupancies. And when we say certain Group R occupancies, we're referring to R2, which is multifamily residential. That's where the, the mixed-use sprinkler requirement changed significantly between the fire codes.
Okay, so in essence, this, if this passes, it doesn't have anything to do with downtown sprinklers?
It does, it only will. Yeah, it's, it has to do with buildings that are downtown that will have residential and commercial use mixed in the same building.
Okay, and then, I understand, I was told, there is a building on Main Street that was recently, has changed hands, and that building was sprinkled to meet compliance?
So the, at change of ownership, that shouldn't have required a sprinkler system to be installed. The building that I know that most recently, the two that I can think of that most recently had sprinkler systems installed were Jason Blunt bought a three-story building on the 200 block on the north side of the street, and installed a sprinkler system when he renovated for apartments. And the Legacy Foundation bought the Capitol Theater, and they installed a sprinkler system when they renovated for apartments.
Okay, and is there adequate water for either one of those sprinkler systems presently?
Our understanding is there is, from the water department, for those systems that were installed. I don't know if both buildings got on fire at the same time, if that would be true, but in principle, there is.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council before I open it up to the audience? Okay, we have one individual who's indicated that they would like to speak on this topic, so I'll call Dennis up here, and give your name and your address, please.
Dennis Willhoy, 334 East Fifth Street. I also own properties downtown. And so, you know, I approach it from a different perspective, because I don't think that any of you have skin in the game when it comes to our downtown buildings, and have invested so heavily in the downtown area. I would encourage you to adopt this resolution. We're at this point because council didn't do a thorough job, I, I just want to review this, didn't do a thorough job and, and pass something blank, it didn't know what they were voting on, and here we are, and this is drug on. I have a building I've been trying to sell for a long time, and it's not going, because that's one of the biggest question marks. We negotiate safety every day. We, you know, this, to say that this isn't as safe as we could be, well, how many structures are there in town that aren't as safe as they should be? Have squatters in them, have homeless folks in them, have, you know, caught on fire because of illegal activity. So safety is negotiable, and, and you all negotiate that every day. So I don't think, and the facts that you provide are unsighted, and so it's difficult to know where those facts come from unless there are citations to go along when presenting facts. So I would encourage you to adopt and pass it tonight. It would be nice to have it adopted. I think that if you adopt it unanimously, you could waive the second and the third hearings. I believe this has gone on long enough, and we need progress, because you're stuck in the mud. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
I would like to add one thing before Zach comes up. Cited, it's, if you would like to look up my facts, National Fire Protection Agency...
I don't think there's a conversation, is there, between, I mean, I state my case and...
No, I just wanted to state my facts, National Fire Protection...
I'm not looking for answers, I'm just looking to state my opinion.
The Sprinkler Association Committee and National Fire Protection Committee.
He has a right to speak back, he has a right to speak back.
And the, the corporate insurance company, so that I, I can provide...
Well, then I have the right to speak back, too, if you're going to bring in corporate insurance...
I, I just was telling you where I got my facts.
If you're going to use corporate insurance as the basis of a citation for a fact, obviously, corporate insurance is not unbiased, it's very biased.
Right, I got two of my facts from insurance, most of it came...
And restaurants have suppression systems. I mean, that's not going to change. I owned a restaurant, we have to have suppression systems to prevent fire. Restaurants are well-protected, so, so to bring that statistic in the conversation is a confusing statistic, because it's already handled.
Could I, would you allow me to bring the National Fire Protection Agency statistics, statistics into it?
I don't, I'm, no. I wouldn't, because I'm not at that point. Right now, I'm frustrated that we have this building, it's been on the market, we can't sell it, and this is the reason why we've had a difficult time selling it. And as I said, when you've got investment and money on the line, other things become negotiable. And as I said, you negotiate safety every day, and every day in this town. So to become, you know, sort of high and holy on the safety sermon right now is turning your back on the reality of all of the other unsafe things that are happening in this town.
And transparently, that's the way I ran, I'm always going to put safety first. Again, I don't think they're the enemy, but I'm not on a high horse holding safety. I, I just believe in safety for everyone. I mean, I appreciate that, that you're trying to sell that building, and I, and I hope you can, and I'm understanding of that, and I don't want to stop progress. I was just being transparent why I arrived at that decision, and was willing to share my facts with you, so.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this particular topic? Zach, do you have anything else you want to say?
No, I suppose we've kind of covered pretty exhaustively. I, I do, I guess I will just reiterate, you know, for us looking at it, economic vitality downtown is a really core part of our strategy for development. Per acre, per square foot, it's the fastest increase in valuation, the largest increase in valuation from the last five, 10 years is downtown. And we want to maintain that progress, and this is really an effort to try to strike a good compromise. If we can get that development to continue, we can have the resources to pursue all the other parts of our strategy, which are also related to safety. But I understand it's absolutely a really critical balance, and it's been a, a challenge for, for us to try to strike it, so.
Thank you. If there's no other comments from anyone, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Kavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Just closing the public hearing, right?
Yes.
Ordinance Number 3231-2024, amending the Fire Protection and Prevention Code of the City of Atumal by adopting an amendment providing for standardization of performance compliance alternatives to automatic fire sprinkler systems in certain Group R occupancies. Recommendation, pass the first consideration of Ordinance Number 3231-2024.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Kavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
No.
Okay, the first consideration passes.
Mayor, it was our recommendation as well, if there was more than a simple majority, that the council do consider waiving the readings, because the issue's gone on for several months. At four votes yes, I believe that is a motion the council could make.
I would move to waive the second and third. I would second that.
You second?
Yes.
Okay, there's been a motion made, is there any further discussion? If not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Kavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
No.
Okay, the first consideration passes, and there won't be a second or a third. Okay, we move on to ordinances, we have two ordinances tonight.
Ordinance Number 3232-2024, amending Chapter 23 Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Atumal, Iowa, adding a new article, golf carts therein, for the purposes of regulating the operation of golf carts within the corporate limits of the City of Atumal, Iowa. Recommendation, pass the second consideration of Ordinance Number 3232-2024.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Phil, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I, I think this had been brought up at the last meeting. We had a public hear, no, we did not have a public hearing on this. But there's been public input on this, and if anyone has signed up, they can weigh in again tonight. It passed the first reading, it was 3-1, but with an absent council member. That is considered a no vote, so 3-2, it still passed, and is up before you for the second reading. The ordinance was adopted from the Pleasant Hill, Iowa draft, with some modifications after a council work session.
Does council have any questions for Phil? If not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Kavanis?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
No.
Councilmember Galloway?
No.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-2. Ordinance Number 3233-2024, amending the Code of Ordinances by changing the zoning classification of property known as 1014 North Elm Street, lots 30, 31, 32, and 33 in East Atumal, in addition to the City of Atumal, Waplo County, Iowa, from R2, two-family residential district, to R4, multifamily residential medium-density district. Recommendation, pass the second consideration of Ordinance Number 3233-2024.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Zach, do you have anything you'd like to present?
Just a couple of additional things I'd like to just try to clarify. The staff recommendation and the planning and zoning recommendation is to approve the second consideration of the rezoning for this property, which would rezone the property which was formerly the Family Crisis Center, to be used for permanent supportive housing, nine apartment units that would help folks transition from homelessness into the community. I wanted to just emphasize that this is about rezoning. This isn't a project where they came to the city to request funding, or where they're asking for a grant or things like that. It's really about what is the appropriate use category for the property. And the property's been used for multifamily housing since before the 2015 zoning code was adopted. There's other properties, including the condo complex, where the only person who spoke at the last meeting in opposition to the program, that's a similar situation, that's a multifamily building that's zoned R2 and is non-conforming in its zoning now. If they were to want to sell that complex to somebody who would redevelop or change in the future, and they wanted to exercise their right as a condo board to do that, they would have to pursue the exact same rezoning. And we would say that that'd be the correct rezoning as well, because it would reflect how the property has been used even before the zoning code was adopted. We believe the category would be correct at R4 multifamily. That's really the only thing to clarify beyond what was at the previous meeting. Thank you.
Does council have any questions for Zach before I open it up to the public?
Zach, I think we had people speak at the last meeting regarding this issue.
Yeah.
And I thought there was merit in how they were approached.
Yeah.
Merit in 200 feet not being a reasonable amount of coverage. And I received an article with Victor showing the sign that was in the yard. Not readable from the street. So I think there needs to be some consideration to the size of the post, so that people can read it, from the street at least.
And that is something we're going to put on the agenda for the next Plan and Zoning Commission meeting, is to decide how far we would want to change that 200-foot buffer. That's something that I don't see being an issue to do going forward for the courtesy notice. We also did, in the last couple of weeks, we identified with the county what their records reflect to be condo complexes, so that we can generate a list, that when we do pull a buffer area, we can check that any of those addresses are on that list of condos. And then we have at least the current assessor's data for who owns those. We also mailed out a second notice to everyone within that 200 feet, including the condo owners that we could, that advertised there was a hearing. At the time we mailed the notice, we still hadn't gotten the addresses from the county, so we just addressed them to condo owner. But we also have since gotten the names that can go along with those in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. We have six individuals that would like to speak on this agenda item tonight. And since this isn't a public hearing, I will just tell everybody that when you come up, you need to give your full name, your address, and you'll have three minutes to state your case. So we'll start with Lorraine.
Good evening. I'm Lorraine Yuling Tekel. I'm the Executive Director of the Family Crisis Center at 1014 North Elm. All I came to say is, we have a very large building that was made to house multiple families. It has been, it was built that way by TenCo 25 years ago, something like that, 30 years. We purchased it from TenCo, we have been there, I don't know, oh, well over 20 years, and it has always been used as multifamily housing, as Zach stated. We no longer have use for that building, we do not have funding for housing at this point. We are going to be looking to sell that building to someone who needs 16 bedrooms and five baths. So apparently, it was zoned wrong at the very beginning, when it was built. Now, none of you were on the council then, it's not your fault, but it certainly is an issue that the council needs to address, because we have the right to sell our building, and we didn't make a zoning mistake. So, I mean, if this doesn't pass, if we're not allowed to sell, we're, we're going to have to do some kind of legal action, so that we can. We don't have the funding to keep a building up like that, we don't have the need for that building. There is an organization that we discovered does have a need, I believe has a great plan, that we support. So I just wanted to state that, that we're not going to stay there.
Thank you, Lorraine.
Thank you.
Next is Tammy.
Hi, I'm Tammy Wells Butts, and my address is 1015 East Court. And I'd just like to say, my husband and I, as a retired couple, looking for a place to move, or to build a new home, would not have picked someplace that was having an apartment there or being built, had we known that that was what was going to partake. It's going to increase the amount of traffic, it's going to increase the amount of people, the noise, and it's just not something that we're happy about. And, you know, there's more homes to be built there, and I can't imagine, or, excuse me, what it's going to be like to get those sold. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a question, please. Are you and your husband building a new home in that area?
We have, we've been there since December.
Okay.
And it's been great, but there's big changes coming, and it's scary.
Okay, and you were not notified that this was going on?
No.
In the zoning reserve?
Just now, and everybody else.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Next is Beth.
Hi, my name's Beth Hendrick, I live at eleven-ten East Court Street. I've lived there since nineteen-eighty-seven, so I remember when that lot was vacant. It doesn't directly affect me, because I'm slightly over the hill, I don't see it, but in the years that I've been there, when it's been used for TenCo and for the Crisis Center, trust me, the neighborhood has seen negative effects by residents, who have either been kicked out of the facility because they've showed up drunk, and then they're hammering on your door at midnight, wanting you to call the police, or the whole group coming down and chastising the children on the block. So that's one of my issues. My other question is, what is the vetting process going to be for these residents? Because the number-one cause of homelessness is mental health and/or drug addiction. And I think all of us know that most of the homeless people in Atumwa are homeless because of those two reasons. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Sam, would you like to come up and address that concern?
Do you want to wait till the end, or do you want to?
Why don't you come up now and address it, since she just brought it up? I can have you come back up again if we need to.
My name's Sam Carroll, I represent Central Iowa Shelter Services, fourteen-twenty Mulberry Street in Des Moines. We are a homeless services, or shelter services, we don't just do emergency shelters, we have a hundred-and-fifty emergency beds in Des Moines, but we also do permanent housing, to take the people out of the shelter after they've gone through our program, and get them into permanent housing. And we have eighty-one units, along with a Housing Command Center in Des Moines, where we place these folks, we give them additional, whether that's job training, help with food security, we have a greenhouse in growing, so just a lot of these.
Can you see that, please, Sam?
I'm sorry, is that better? Where we have a lot of different services to help these people get back into sustainability. Certainly, there are folks that are homeless, that do have mental health issues, those are usually sent to a different kind of treatment, that's not what we do. Our permanent housing are for people that need a place to live, and have gone through the program, or may not have enough income to get out on the private market, and so we're able to assist them, get them into permanent housing, and help them move on. Some stay for years, some move on within three months, six months, eight months, but just to, I just want to be clear, what we're building there is not a shelter, like what we have in Des Moines, but rather permanent housing for people that are either at risk of being evicted, and frankly, most of those people are because they've lost a job, or just aren't, you know, have had some big financial crunch that's put them in harm's way as far as housing.
And at the council meeting last month, I think you indicated that there would be staff there during the daytime, correct?
Yes, absolutely, that's part of the Housing Command Center, which is kind of a service center, that again, gets them, and we coordinate that with other local organizations that provide, whether that's the food bank, or the Atumwa Housing Authority, we work with those. We've, the thing about Central Iowa Shelters is why we're based in Des Moines, we actually serve a fifteen-county area with our outreach and caseworkers, and these folks have a caseworker as well to help, again, with the different plans that they may have. So Waplo County has been a county that we've been working with for quite a while.
So you had indicated that you didn't think that it would be appropriate to take people with, say, addiction or mental health issues, how are you going to screen for that?
Well, they, we do a vetting project of who we think can, you know, it's almost like a merit system in a sense, that's really, and for the third reading, if you want, I can bring back our outreach folks, that's, I'm more the project development guy, our frontline staff work with folks, and they put together a plan, they get a, you know, engaged in the different programs that might be available to them, if it's, I mean, I found a statistic the other day, for instance, that kind of floored me, but they say almost eighty-one percent have some kind of brain damage. Now, brain damage can be substance abuse, you know, it can be trauma, it can be a lot of different things, but, so there's certainly, you know, and not just in the homeless community, but in society, I think today, there's all kinds of levels of mental health, and so that's one of the things that we, if it's above, you know, if it's a severe thing, there are other services that we try to connect them with.
Does council have any questions, they want to ask Sam while he's up here?
So what I'm hearing is that you're saying there's a wraparound program for these people, we're not just housing them and leaving them, which I think is one of our biggest mistakes in society, is when we just house and then leave, and then that's when we see a lot of the issues with reoccurring substance use into the home and that kind of stuff. So I, I am encouraged to hear that. You keep talking or referencing a program, that once they go through the program, so I'm a social worker, and I've worked with your company before, and just other areas, so I understand that, but there's probably a lot of people who don't understand what you're saying when you say a program, can you give some more information and details about that?
Yeah, we try to meet people where they are, and so when they, when they come to the shelter, or with our outreach people, identify them on the street, and a lot of times, they just, they don't know where to go to help, for help. So what we do is we'll bring them in and do an intake. And that intake is, we identify who they are, try to get, you know, sometimes they need identification, and so they will take them through and evaluate what their need might be, whether it's mental health, physical health. We typically have at the, in Des Moines, we actually have a clinic on site. Here, what we would do is utilize with some of the local health units to have them visit frequently, or get them to the right spot. So we kind of find what it is that they need. In a lot of cases, I mean, they've just fallen on a hard time, or they've, they just don't have the resources to get back engaged, and so what we're able to do is to evaluate that, find out what the best course of action for them. So it's not some specific program so much as it's figuring out a course of action, and what resources to hook them up to through our intake system, and then getting them to a case manager that, of course, continues to work with them through that process. Now, not everybody who lives, you know, in our permanent housing projects has that anymore, I mean, they've kind of gone, gotten to where they needed to be, and they're flourishing, and like I say, a lot of times, they move on to even a better housing situation, but...
Does council have any other questions for Sam?
Yes, I do, Mayor, thank you. So again, thank you for being here, I cannot say how much I appreciate the services that your organization provides. And I do understand some of the concerns that community members have about the safety of their area within the community. Could you speak a little bit on other properties that you have that are similar to this, and maybe what that looks like, maybe like a success rate, or what the community around them looks like, and efforts to try to alleviate some of these concerns?
Yeah, you know, while we have the eighty-one units, they're actually the second, third floor of our Des Moines shelter, so the emergency shelter is on the first floor, a lot of our food programs and things like that run out of that, and then on the second and third floor, we have eighty-one, you know, permanent housing units for veterans, for Section Eight, those kind of, so those kind of programs. Just to give you an idea, the staff that work with those two upper floors is one or two people. The staff that works with a homeless community downstairs, that's a much bigger lift, and costly, but very intense. So the two, the two worlds work pretty, pretty well, but I, you know, if we were putting a shelter there, I would understand some of those concerns. The two, where we have the eighty-one units, just to give you an idea, right across the street, a luxury apartment building is being built, literally, right across the street. So it works pretty well in the community. If you've been in Des Moines, you know that you occasionally see homeless people along the street, or in the skywalks, and that's where our outreach people go to work with them, to try to get them, you know, into shelter, or away from kind of our commerce, if you will, but then, but those people, our shelter, we only, the average stay there's about twenty-eight days, so we're able to move them on into permanent housing or other housing situations pretty quickly, out of the emergency shelter. And so they go into a lot of private, we utilize a lot of private landlords, we utilize other organizations that work with that population, and so they really get integrated into other neighborhoods and communities pretty successfully and pretty quickly.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
I just got one, state right off, you know, obviously, I'm a sport or your program, but you do, it sounds like you have a high success rate, and there was a concern brought up that, she brought up that people might get kicked out, or knocking on their door, so I guess my question is, I think I know the answer, if somebody did have trouble there, they actually would just get moved to your Des Moines, they wouldn't be like kicked to the curb, or kicked to the street?
Yeah, no, I mean, our mission is, you know, Central Iowa Shelters was actually started by eight churches after five men froze to death in Des Moines in nineteen-ninety-two. And they were denied because of, so we are a low-barrier shelter there, where here, it's, you know, we're looking for people that fit into neighborhoods that are...
But even if it doesn't work out at all times, you have some place for everybody.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Thank you, Sam. Next is Chris.
I'm Chris Craver, I own and live at nine-forty-eight North Elm Street, one of the condos that's been referenced. I had comments, and I still want to touch on them, about the process, which I understand you're working on. I agree, and I'm the one who brought it up, I can't believe any of you actually really feel that a rezoning of any kind impacts only a radius in the neighborhood of two-hundred feet. I just think you haven't addressed that, you haven't consciously thought about that two-hundred-foot radius being the only folks who need to be notified. The other piece is the process by which you feel you were going above and beyond the necessary things, to notify the community, so that they actually had a chance to address some of the questions you're hearing here tonight, and get some of the responses, to offer their own concerns, and then to readdress or ask, which now I have a lot of questions swimming in my head, the questions that come up after you hear some of the responses. And that goes back to your attempt at the letter, it goes back to your attempt at the signage, which has both been addressed, and I was the one who sent the picture, because that signage is thirteen by nineteen inches, it's unreadable from the street, when I parked the car and got out of the car and walked up to the sign, I couldn't even read it from the sidewalk. Those are oversights, I think it's probably just because it's the process you've always used, it makes it very hard for the community to really believe that your intent is to go above and beyond to notify folks, so that they have the access to this. I have all kinds of questions, I don't even know where to start. This process, this project, has been on somebody's drawing board, and in the process, in the pipeline somewhere, since probably the first of the year. I can see pictures of plans that have been prepared by architects dating in March. Why are we just now getting to a point where we're actually asking for public input, when we're against a deadline? We have a bucket of money that is, I'm going to call it free, for lack of a better term, but we have a deadline now, that we actually have to be pressured into making a decision, when we could have been addressing a lot of these concerns from quite a while ago. That's what I'm offering you as my request, that you do something serious about improving the process, not just for this project, for other projects. I spoke to a realtor in town, who actually found out about a rezoning potential in his neighborhood, and what he was told was the sign was on the building. Found out about it the night of, or the night before the council meeting, showed up here with a bunch of friends, fifty or so, was his estimate, and spoke against the rezoning of that particular project. He had enough clout, he had enough resources to pool those people. Now I go back to some of the stuff I'm just hearing, and I realize I'm probably stretching my three minutes.
You're past it.
I'm past it, thank you for being so tolerant.
I do want to just say one thing, and I really do have confidence in our Community Development Director, when he says that the Zoning and Planning Commission definitely is going to go back and look at some of the inefficiencies that have been identified recently, like the size of the signage, how are we going to notify everybody, they're going to look at maybe expanding that much farther than two-hundred feet, so I think you're going to see some real revisions come out of the Planning and Zoning Commission in the near future, because I think some of those issues, because those have been brought up, are very valid.
Mayor, sorry, I was just going to ask, Zach, when is that next meeting? Because that is a public meeting, so people are able to attend that, and then provide feedback too, correct?
Yes, the Plan and Zoning Commission meets the first Monday of every month, in this case, the first Monday of the month is Labor Day, so they'll meet the second Monday, I don't know the date of that, but it'd be the second Monday in September, September ninth.
And is that there?
No, that'll be at City Hall, it's in the conference room at the temporary City Hall Depot, on the second floor.
Say the time one more time for me.
I think it's six, let me look before I tell you. I'll say when I get up.
Sorry, I need to interrupt you.
It's on our website as well.
So, you know, some of the issues that we've just, that have just been, we've just heard some responses to, don't address all of the questions that we have come up with, as far as the rezoning of that particular corner, that particular lot. If you'll give me a minute, I'll just go down them quickly, I would like answers for them, I don't know that you can get them tonight, but maybe by the next time. Improvement and maintenance of that street and alley that's behind there, the city doesn't maintain it, they don't plow it, they don't remove the snow, they don't do anything. We're going to have extra traffic and extra cars, I assume. The vetting qualifications, how are you actually, what kinds of individuals are you actually looking to put into those homes? And verification that the individuals you're actually putting into those homes are actually local individuals. I understand there's a process, a project, a process that is supposed to help those folks become more self-sufficient, maybe more resilient, as far as taking care of themselves, but I don't know that any of that exists here in Atumwa, so where are you getting those folks who have accomplished that process, and are then able to reside in a permanent supportive housing unit, which is what you're calling this, a permanent supportive housing I'd like to know what the function is of the staff member who is in the building, I assume that means, well, we know what means during the day, because we were told there would be no one there at night in any kind of supportive capacity at all, because these individuals would be permanent residents with apartments, locks on their own doors, access to come and go anytime they wanted. So that individual there in the building, is that a secretary answering the phone, taking a rent check, is that an individual?
I believe Mr. Correll last time said it would be a case manager.
It is a case manager, so they're a social worker of some kind, actively working with the residents.
That was my understanding.
Correct?
Is that not correct, Sam?
It would be case manager, it would be staff, and it would be maintenance person.
That's, that's, that's the three, this is not...
There, it, the target moved, is it a case manager there?
He's describing multiple people.
I got that, but who's there assigned to that building during the day?
Okay, thank you, Chris, for your comments.
You bet. We have more questions.
I recommend that you present those in writing, if you'd like for us to reconsider what you're saying.
Thank you.
It would be very nice.
Would you like me to bring them to City Hall?
That'd be fine.
Thank you.
I think to clarify too, this isn't, again, a homeless, a shelter for people experiencing homelessness, it's the, it's apartments, you know, so it's people, like he had said, that have gone through the program, and we have to remember that people who experience homelessness are people too, and not everyone is experiencing mental health or substance use, you know, I think a lot of us probably read an article recently about two people from John Deere, who were, who both got let go on the same day, you know, who knows what will happen to them, or women who experience domestic violence, men or women, I apologize, who, but, who experience domestic violence, and they need a place to go, you know, it's, they're not, we have to remember that these are people, and this is an apartment complex, and that's, and then they also get help and support too, if needed. Not everyone, like he had said, not everyone does need that support, but they just need the place, because maybe the finances aren't there right now, but then they can be there, because housing is expensive, housing is very expensive, as we know too, so. Housing is very expensive as we know too, so.
I'd like to just make one comment. First off, I'd like to thank Councilperson Galloway for what you said. I totally 100% agree. And I think we're making this into something it's not. It's, he's explained clearly that it's a, it's a stepping stone and it's people who want to be there. And, and I agree that not all, you know, not all homeless people, I mean, like Doug said, nobody chooses, I mean, there are people who, who choose, say they choose to be homeless, but that's happened somewhere in their life, that, that something happened. Nobody aspires to be homeless. I think programs like this, which he's clearly said is, is, is an apartment building for people who are vetted and for people who want to do better. And I feel good about it because even if, if something happens there, he, he has a place for him to go. So I, I think people kind of have a nightmarish thing in their mind, and that's, that's not what I'm getting what it is. It's, it's, it's an apartment for people. I mean, anybody, I mean, if you look at the poverty levels, look what wage you make that's a poverty level, there are lots of people that could be homeless tomorrow regardless of age, anything. You could be homeless tomorrow. So I'm, I'm transparent, I'm supporting you, so.
Okay, next we have Mary.
Chris, touch please sunlight.
Yeah. Just state your name and your address, please.
Might not need a microphone.
You can pull that down if you need to because it is hard for people to hear if you don't speak into the microphone.
Thank you. My name is Mary Johnson, and I live at 932 North Elm Street. I'm right next door. Doug and I have the only house from J Street to East Court. And then the fourplex is beside us. Doug bought the home in 99. And since then, when he bought, there was no housing on the fourplex or anything, or he would have bought that if it wasn't up for sale at the time. So with that being said, we've been on the alley. He's been there, I've been there 15 years of that time. And with just the alley being our only access to the street or to get out, and same way with Chris and Becky and the other folks that live in the big house that have their big driveway, and then we have the church traffic already that just put up signs to come in their end for parking after all these years. So with that being dusty and everything, on Chris's end, just got repaired because I think at one time that was a street and then it just got the way it is, gravelled and hulled and everything. Oak Street is just that little block that's got the name to it. So the alley goes to J Street, which is used all the time for people going that way. When I leave my home, I usually take and go Chris's way to East Court because there's so many holes, the dirt, and that's trafficked, whether people are walking their dogs and things. But the maintenance, if this is going to be a project to put in for lower-end housing project, that needs to be blacktopped. It needs to be the city maintain it if we're putting more city housing on that land. Added on to the crisis center, the shelter, where there's 16 beds, it could be useful for people. But as far as the crime, lower-end housing has its own police officer or has for years had to adopt, adapt to one in the city because of the crime rate, because of the abuse to women, children, men. And when it was dressed for the homeless as the developer states tonight for homeless use, that's what gives that homeless instead of just misplaced, needing a place to stay. And the topic of addiction runs rampant in our community, whether it be an addiction to can't get away from abusive relationship, to can't get enough help. Because our city is not built like Des Moines. We lost our St. Joe Hospital where we had all the doctors or thought we had enough for our community. Our aging has always been, our community's always been the poorest, one of the poorest in Iowa.
Mary, do you want to make one more statement because you're out for time?
Sorry, but yes, mine is if we're going to have more traffic than we've had, please maintain Oak, make Oak a whole street to J, and please put a 10 mile an hour limit on them to streets, alley and street because cars fly down, cars fly back. We have children, little children that live. We have 10 grandchildren ourselves, five greats. They fly. We eat dirt all the time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
The last person that we have on the list is Becky.
Hi, I'm Becky Engel, and I live at 952 North Elm, which is one of those condos that I guess I'm living in, not under the ordinance, but that had nothing to do with me. I just want to start by saying I don't want any kind of apartment complex next to me. I don't care what kind it is. And I believe that the process that you followed to let people in the neighborhood know was very flawed, and I know you're going to work on it. But I think the more you hear that it's flawed and the more people hear it's flawed, the more attention it's going to get. You denied us our rights to speak at the Planning and Zoning Committee when we would have been able to ask a lot of questions and get answers that I've been hearing here. As, and as Chris said, it brings up more questions all the time, and perhaps we wouldn't have to have all these talks if we would have been given the right to be at the Planning and Zoning Meeting.
They are open meetings.
Yeah, okay. Why would I go if I didn't know this was going on? I mean, there was a public notice put in the paper. Does even 50% of Atumwa take the paper anymore? And it's a real small thing. There was that sign that was posted in the yard, couldn't see it. I didn't get a letter. I understand a letter was sent out. We went to City Hall to get a copy of that first letter. Nobody could come up with that letter.
But you have a letter now, don't you?
I do have a letter now. Would have really loved to have had it before the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting, which I think is where we needed to talk. And then the letter that came, and I know Zach addressed this also already, is, you know, it said, Dear condominium owner, strange, when you want my money for taxes, it says Becky Engel right on there instead of just Dear condominium owner. I, I don't believe enough due diligence was done before this process started. According to Section 38996 of the Atumwa Code, the potential hardships and nuisances such as noise, the other things they list don't, can't be considered of the rezoning request have been adequately, adequately considered. I don't think they have. Someone else is going to talk tonight, he was going to talk about the safety. Right where that is located, North Elm, there's that hill. People ramp up to go and jump the hill. They go 40, 45, 50 miles an hour down that. We have kids, and there will be kids in this apartment complex. I'm worried for their safety. There's another, Iowa code that says if you can get 20% of the neighborhood, you know, to write a written statement saying we don't want this, that you have to listen to that appeal. We were not given that right to know what was going on before it happened. So again, I feel this is being pushed through very quickly again because of the pandemic money, and it has to be used. Many people touched on things that I, you know, have mentioned here. But if the process is going to be changed, I would like to be notified somehow, some way, of the meetings that talk about how the process is going to be changed. And I think in this day of social media and people not taking the paper, and I know you have a website, but people don't always go to the website, put it on Facebook, Instagram, TikTok, whatever those things are, that'll let people know what is going on in this community. Safety, Bill, I know you're worried about safety. I was one of those people when the women's shelter was running that had somebody knocking on their door claiming they were raped, you know? I called the police, they were very kind. I told them, you know, this lady I think is drunk, she needs a place to stay, and he told me, yes, she's drunk, we've got a place for her to stay. I don't want to have to be calling the police, and I don't know that I would have to, but there is going to be increased traffic. As Mary stated, Oak Street needs to be paved and maintained. I talked to the council many years ago about maintaining our alley because that's our only egress. They said, yes, we will do that. They did it that winter and then stopped. So we have to pay to get out because our condo just faces the alley. You can't get out on North Elm. That's neither here nor there about this. But again, I want the process changed, and I'm against any rezoning of that property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Zach, did you confirm when that meeting's going to be?
Yeah, it'll be at 6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m. on the ninth?
Yeah.
And you're going to talk about the process?
Yes.
When you post the meetings for the Planning and Zoning Commission, does it have the agenda also so people can see what topics are going to be discussed at that meeting?
Yes.
I think that, I mean, I think that brings up a good point, and maybe it's something I don't, I know Travis is busy too, but maybe that's something we can start looking into also on posting those agendas on Facebook or other media sources.
Is there anybody else?
And I would, I just clarify for all of our boards and commissions too, because there's other things that come up, I think, that are important for people to know too.
Was there anybody else that wanted to speak on this topic? Zach, do you have some closing comments you'd want to make?
I just want to add a couple of clarification things, at least to do our best to answer some of the questions. There's a site plan included in the packet that describes the plan for parking and traffic circulation on the site. The intent is to build a new parking lot that's sized adequately for the units that would have all access from Elm Street. There's no plan to use the alley or Oak for people to get access to these apartments. So we don't want to make that situation any worse. If folks are having issue with that street, there's no plan to make that any worse. The process, we are going to look at making changes. Changes would relate to serving notice to a wider area. We can look at the sign being larger as well. But the time for, you know, the timeline for receiving the petition for rezoning to acting on it has to be short. People are entitled, property owners are entitled to have due consideration to that petition. And so we'll have all the steps, and we'll try to provide as much notice for all the steps, but the timeline is something that'll have to keep pretty consistent as at the next, at the next meeting of the Plan and Zoning Commission, it will be on the agenda as long as it's duly received, and then it'll go to hearing at the next council meeting. But we will try to stick with that and make those changes.
Thank you. Does council have any other questions before we do the roll call? Okay, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
So the second consideration is passed. Next, we don't have any departmental recommendations or reports, so we'll move into resolutions.
Resolution number 179, 2024, approving transfer of funds as of June 30th, 2024 as presented by the Finance Department. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number 179, 2024.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you. At the August 2nd meeting, the council approved transfers for June 2024 with the exception of the franchise used for the general fund. This was due to the timing of the receipts of the, of the fees from the utility providers. All revenues have now been received, and the final transfer can be made, and that final transfer is in the amount of $511,548.24. And we were within several thousand dollars of budgeted revenues with that final payment.
Does council have any questions for Mr. O'Donnell? Not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number 180, 2024, accepting a grant offer for Airport Improvement Program Project Number 31973262024 at the Atumwa Regional Airport. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number 180, 2024.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, JD, it's yours.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Council. The Federal Aviation Administration had awarded a grant of $158,310 for the design and survey work for the upcoming apron and taxiway work at the Atumwa Regional Airport. The contract with Kirk and Michael was approved at the April 16th, 2024 City Council meeting with resolution number 92, 2024. The total cost of the survey is $172,949.69. The FAA ground amount is $158,310, with the amount to be paid out of the airport fund balance is only $14,639.69.
Can you tell me what that is for again?
It's for the design and the survey work that's being done right now for the upcoming taxiway and apron project. We'll, we'll bid that project in early spring. It has to be bid by the end of March.
Okay, thank you.
So this is just to accept the money that they want to give us.
Does council have any other questions for JD? Not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution number 181, 2024, set September 3rd, 2024 at 5:30 p.m. as the date for a public hearing on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of notes not to exceed $16 million general obligation capital loan notes, State of Iowa revolving fund loan of the City of Atumwa, State of Iowa, and providing publication of notice thereof. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number 181, 2024.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Thank you, sir. Phase eight, Division three of the sewer separation project is ready to move forward. Financing for the project will be through the Iowa Finance Authority, State Revolving Loan Fund. Normal repayment of the SFR is through user fees. Staff is proposing repayment through local option sales service tax. Such, as such, the Finance Authority treats the loan as general obligation debt, and we must follow the procedures for issuance of that debt. The first step is a public hearing, and staff recommends September 3rd, 2024 at 5:30 p.m. You do have a copy of the revised ordinance. We are notified by legal counsel this afternoon that there is language that is now required under state code to be included in the public notices. That is on the second page under Section 4, the very last sentence of the second paragraph under Section 4, which is, "The annual increase in property tax as a result of the issuance of a resident, on a residential property with the actual value of $100,000 estimated not to exceed $86.09. Abatement of the levy with other funds may cause the actual annual increase in, in property tax to vary." We can't put zero on there because we are going to abate this 100% with local option sales tax. We have to put in a figure in there, but this will not go on property tax. It will be fully abated by local option sales tax.
Does council have any questions for Mr. O'Donnell? If not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number 183, 2024, awarding the contract for asbestos abatement and demolition of the six trailers at 1405 Albia Road, lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 10, and 29, subject to court's order to Dan Larson of Atumwa, Iowa for $6,800 for asbestos abatement and $32,900 for demolition for a total bid of $39,700. Recommendation passed and adopt resolution number 183, 2024.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, Zach.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution looks a lot like the ones you see when we do a condemnation and then we award bid for demolition of a condemned house, but it's a little bit different, and there's a couple of things I want to point to. This is six trailers at 1405 Albia Road. Trailer homes that are not set on a permanent foundation and are located in a trailer park are not treated in the same way as real estate, and so they're not subject to are not treated in the same way as real estate, and so they're not subject to condemnation by the Board of Health in the same way. We've had a really difficult time with the, this particular, uh, mobile home park at 1405 Albia Road. Uh, there's a lot of issues inside that park that we've had to do nuisance abatements with, but especially these six trailers, which, um, at least four of them are, you can tell looking at them, they're completely burned through, the doors are open, all the windows are broken. Um, there, we hear from the folks that live there that there's some, you know, suspicious activity in those trailers all times of night, things like that. Um, and we tried to figure out a good approach to getting them cleared when we couldn't use the demolition, or the condemnation process. Uh, working with our attorneys, uh, we did identify that we could bring in action, um, to, through magistrate court, uh, filing a municipal infraction, and then having a judge award, um, a judgment that includes in it, the owner has within 30 days to demolish these units, or the city can demolish them and assess the costs to property tax, really similar to what we do with condemnation. Um, and so that's what we're looking to do in this case, is these six mobile homes, which are especially bad, um, in which we did win, um, a default judgment and an order from the court that allows us to demolish them, we're looking to go in and demolish them. And so we solicited those bids for demolition until 2:00 p.m. on August 8th. We received five bids. Uh, the best bid was from Dan Larson for a total of $39,700. That's for six mobile homes, $39,000. Um, I do want to point out one other thing, which is if you turn to the bid tabulation in the packet, uh, you'll see the bids were quite a bit all over the place, but there is a bid from Don Jones for $7,800, and I want to flag it. There's two reasons why you're not being asked to, uh, look at Don Jones' bid. The first is, we have on our bid form, contractors can check a box that they are willing to separate their asbestos and demolition bids. Uh, in this case, they did not check those boxes. So nobody who's qualified to abate asbestos wanted to only abate asbestos without doing the demolition. So we had no qualified bid. The other issue is that the bid for demolition of $7,800 is so far from the other bids that we don't believe that, uh, Mr. Jones had a full understanding of the scope of work. The other bids are at least $32,000, and his bid of $7,800 is so far away that we don't have confidence that even if there had been a situation where we could award the asbestos separately, we don't have confidence that that bid is really an accurate reflection of what the, his cost would be in the end. We'd expect a change order. So, um, for that reason, the best qualified bid which meets both the asbestos and demolition was Larson, um, for 38,000, or $39,700, and our recommendation would be to award him that contract.
Zach, are these trailers all owned by one person or multiple people?
So the park is owned by one person. Um, the trailers, there's some other different types of ownership in them. We believe them to be abandoned, um, and to be the responsibility of the owner. That's kind of the foundation of our action. Um, and so, uh, you know, we were proceeding with that, and we were able to get the judge to award on that.
Well, if we're not able to recover from the individual owners, are we able to assess this to the trailer park?
Yes, yeah, we would be assessing the cost of this. Um, we'll give them a bill first and an opportunity to pay it, and if they don't pay it, then we'll assess it to, uh, their property tax. Um, this park has sold several times in the last couple of years for hundreds of thousands of dollars. Our hope is that, you know, if it is to sell again, that we'd be able to recover an assessment as part of the, the closings. That'll come up on a real estate closing, and that'll need to be settled. So, uh, we do think there's a better chance of recovering this. It does put us in a position down the road where we might have a conversation about if it doesn't get paid, whether the city wants to pursue a tax sale deed to the entire trailer park, and that's a, a whole other issue we can look at in the future.
Thank you. Does council have any other questions for Zach? Okay, if not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number 184, 2024, accepting the engagement agreement from Allers and Cooney P.C. for the preparation of the necessary contract proceedings for the Blake's Branch Sewer Separation Phase Eight Division Three Project, where SRF funding is utilized and a bidding compliance opinion is required. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 184, 2024.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Phil, I believe you're going to take this.
Yeah, so, uh, as, uh, our Director of Finance had mentioned, uh, under the Iowa State Revolving Fund Program, there are certain, uh, requirements, uh, in order to apply and, uh, get, uh, the funding for that. Uh, with the Blake's Branch Sewer Separation Phase Eight Division Three Project, um, uh, the city would need to provide a legal opinion ensuring the bidding compliance and the necessary contract proceedings related to the project was completed. Uh, that, the work is outside of the general legal services provided by Allers and Cooney P.C. They have provided the attached engagement letter to address those services, uh, and have, uh, requested a flat rate of $3,500 to complete that work on behalf of the city.
Does council have any questions for Phil?
That takes care of the whole thing?
Uh, that would, uh, meet the requirements for, uh, the bid compliance and any contract proceedings related to that project.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions from council? If not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number 185, 2024, ordering construction of the Blake's Branch Sewer Separation Phase Eight Division Three and fixing a date for hearing thereon and taking of bids therefore. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 185, 2024.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Burke Byer?
All right, thank you, Mayor. So this is one of the items that the attorneys did for us, uh, that we're paying for from the last, uh, resolution. So they, they write the, uh, the resolutions that we're going to present to you now, just because they're going to provide the opinion to SRF on it, so that we had them write these resolutions. Um, this one is a little different order than we usually do it. Usually have a public hearing and approve the plans and specs at the first council, at the first council meeting. Um, they recommend that we order construction, and we set the date for the public hearing to coincide with the awarding of the contract. So usually have a big presentation here to the public hearing when you first hear about the contract or about the project. We're going to hold off on that until we award the contract and have the presentation and public hearing when we know how much it's going to cost, uh, as we award the contract. So, that being said, um, like I said, this is one of the required steps to, uh, secure SRF funding for Phase Eight Division Three. The primary purpose of this resolution is to order construction of the project and then set the date for accepting bids and holding the public hearing. Um, this project will separate sanitary and storm sewers in the general area of Center Avenue, Grant Street, and Norris Street between Jefferson and Morel Drive, which Morel Drive is that little angled section where Elm Street changes to Iowa Avenue, in case people don't read every sign they drive past. Um, the plans, the estimated cost of construction will be $14.5 million. Plans and specs are unfiled at the city clerk's office. Bids are to be filed on September 25th, 2024 by 2:00 p.m. The public hearing date is being set for the council meeting on October 15th, 2024. Uh, like I said, a present, a presentation providing an overview of the project we've made at the public hearing, at the, uh, October 15th meeting. Any questions?
What's the timeline on this, once it's committed?
Three years, so it'll, we're hoping they'll start construction in the fall slash winter as long as it doesn't get, you know, three feet of frost in the ground. Um, if not, they'll start when things thaw out in the spring of '25.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Phil? Not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Resolution number 186, 2024, accepting the work as final and complete and approving the final pay request for the sanitary sewer spot repairs project. Recommendation pass and adopt resolution number 186, 2024.
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Finish it up, Phil.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Uh, this project was to repair open joints and failed pipe in the sanitary sewer system located at various locations with, within the city of Atumwa. Uh, this work consists of all equipment, labor, and material necessary to perform these trenchless repairs. The streets where we had pipe repairs on were on McLean, Ferry, that should be Maury. Anyway, um, change order number one, increase the contract amount by $2,850. Um, the original contract was 29, or $39,196. Uh, the final contract amount was for $42,046, less all previous payments. The final amount due will be $5,898.50. This contract has been completed and the work was, uh, the work on the contract has been completed according to plans and specifications. Um, this resolution released all retained and authorized final payment. I just wanted to give a short presentation here, a few pictures to show you what this project entailed. Um, I was hoping to have a before and after picture of the same repair. I didn't have it, but I'm going to give you that kind of overview of the process and what it entails. So this is a trenchless pipe repair. Um, this is just a stock photo we got from the contractor. On the right-hand side, you'll see a bunch of guys there rolling a yellowy piece of fabric around a, what's, what they call a, uh, like, it's a big inflatable tube, basically. So they have a piece of fiberglass fabric, and they'll spread a resin on there. Um, this particular resin is just air cured, it's cured by, I don't know if it's air or the moisture in there or what, but it's, it's cured just in the ambient air. So they'll, they'll spread it out, they'll impregnate it with this resin, and they'll roll it on this, uh, on this packer, what they call it, but it's a big inflatable tube. If you want to go to the next slide, or does this remote go? Does this remote work to? Okay. So anyway, they'll, they'll take this big inflatable tube that has wheels on it, they'll lower it down into the manhole, and previously they've cleaned it and televised the, the man, or the pipe, and they'll know exactly how many feet from the manhole the defect is. And they'll take this packer, either push it or pull it down the pipe to the known distance they are from the manhole, and then they'll inflate it. And then, when they inflate it, it pushes out that resin impregnated fiberglass towards the outside of the pipe, and they'll let it sit there and cure. And they can do this under flow, because once they inflate it up, it just pushes all the, the fluid away from there, and, um, it takes anywhere from one hour to three hours to cure. A lot of times they can just do that and let it back up while it's curing, then let the sewer flow through. If not, we'll have to bypass pump. But it's a really nice way to repair pipe because you're not tearing up street. Um, the pipe repairs we made here were either really deep, or they're right next to the street, so we don't want to undermine street when we're doing this, and it just, it saves the cost of repairing the, the street. Um, if you want to go to the next slide, so this is one of the leaky pipes. So we, they found a sinkhole by Maury, um, dumped water down the sinkhole with our, with our truck, and had the camera inside the, the pipe, trying to see where the water came out at, and you can see it bubbling out of that joint right there. This is about nine feet deep, right next to Maury Avenue. Now we have the roundabout going on, we have all this stuff going on. Maury's a pretty heavily traveled street. We decided we don't want to dig the whole street up and close it down for a week trying to repair this. So they went in there with their material and their, their equipment, and they repaired this, this pipe without having to dig up the street, without having to disturb everybody like that.
Is that just a temporary fix, or can that last for a long time?
It's a permanent repair. They, uh, they've tested it out for 50 years, 10,000, or 50 years lifespan on these. Like, it's a structural repair too, so if this was a case where the pipe was cracked and, you know, collapsed, as long as there's a, the general shape of the pipe is there, it'll expand out and it'll, it'll, it's structural, so it'll hold the dirt up to. You don't need a, you don't need an intact pipe around it. Um, the next picture, this isn't the same pipe I showed you with the leak on it, this is a different repair they did, but you can see, see how it kind of conforms, this is a con, this is a clay pipe. You can see how it conforms to the shape of the pipe, you can even see the, the joint that it overlapped on there. I just took this picture with my, my cell phone on their, on their computer screen when they were cameraing it afterwards. But you can see it's a, you know, it looks like a piece of fiberglass pipe, the little wires hanging down are, they, they'll tie that fabric around the packer, and that way it doesn't get wet and fall off the packer as they're moving it into place. Then when they inflate it, those strings break, and then it, they just hang down there, and they'll, they'll eventually wash away. So, anyway, that's what it looks like after they make these repairs, and those repairs should last the, the life of the rest of the pipe.
What's the light at the end of the tunnel?
That's the manhole downstream, so I think they must have pulled this one into place from that manhole downstream, so they, you can see the light there.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm glad you did this because when I was reading it in the packet, I thought, how does this sewer spa repair differ from the sewer sanitation separation projects? I appreciate.
Yeah, I think it's a really nice tool, and I've put money in the budget for FY25 to make this an annual program. So when we have these spots like this where there's a sinkhole, we actually have one sinkhole we found last week next to a garage, and, you know, obviously you can't dig down underneath someone's garage to repair a pipe, so this would be a perfect, uh, place for the next program to repair that.
So is this new technology that you've incorporated since you became Public Works Director, or was it done before?
We've, we've used it before in isolated incidents where, you know, where it fit, but it just seems like there's more places we could be using it, because I don't think we made properly, uh, we didn't fully account for how much it impacted people to have roads shut down, and the full cost of it. It's becoming a more widespread tool. There are several contractors that do it now, whereas I think, you know, several years ago, there wasn't that many contractors that did it. So it's becoming more of a, an accepted practice now.
Any other comments or questions from council? If not, Chris will take the roll.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavaness?
Yes.
Councilmember Basu?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. This is a point in our city council meeting where I ask if there's anyone that would like to speak on any non-agenda items tonight.
I just have one thing I want to say. Um, I just want to give a shout out to the building, um, and code enforcement department. You know, we often hear, um, negative things when we're in this meeting because they have to do their job, but I, um, got a few really great comments, um, about the department and their willingness to work with people and help them out, and, um, I just wanted to share that with everyone.
Thank you. Anyone have any non-agenda items that they'd like to speak on? Okay, if not, we'll move on to...
I'm so sorry.
...Mayor and council, uh, communications or comments. I guess the, the one comment that I'd like to make is, I personally do appreciate all those people that have come and vetted their frustrations about the process that the city has been using to notify people, and I, I feel very confident that our Community Development Director also identifies that there are some areas for fairly large improvement in the way that whole process is going to play out in the future, and I have no doubt that he'll be bringing those recommendations back to the council in the future. But it's really important that we listen to our citizens and that they feel they have the opportunity to come and, uh, state their feelings and their beliefs, even if not everybody always agrees with it. I still think it's important that people feel like they have the ability to be heard by their city government. So I really do appreciate, uh, and I hope when this is all said and done, we can come up with a final plan that's going to, not, maybe not make everybody happy, but at least it will be viewed as having been transparent and, and done the correct way. So, um, that's just something I wanted to... Tag on to tonight's meeting.